So bottom, cut on zoom. Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Finally. This morning was like, oh, we've got to be kidding. The weather.
We were supposed to be going somewhere.
No. I don't want to see the snow anymore.
It's too moraled.
And I gotta keep my shovel on the deck and I wanna put it away and then go.
I just can't help it.
Well, I always worry that it's not gonna melt fast enough, so.
I don't worry about any of that.
Oh.
Was anything established at the LUC meeting?
Um, went through what they presented. Okay, take note, yeah, I figured it out. So, I cleaned it out of my briefcase. I should have brought it because Frank says you're not seeing those things. I said, guys, don't pay me enough money. You know how much of that I'd have filled in my office with again? Anyway, had a good meeting. They had totally reworked everything. The verbiage they came up with was much more workable. Told them they done a good job, made some suggestions, changed some wording. I went home and on the way out of the consultant. And I had a, I was struggling with the lighting, didn't understand the Kelvins and all that stuff. And I said, well, you know, I used to do things of that nature for a living. Do you want me to take a stab at that? Yeah, I have that. So I rewrote it, listened to him, I have a new friend. Andy just said he followed it to him. It's back here, it's right there. I used to do that for a living.
Yeah.
Is it correct?
Good evening, good evening.
Should really make for something. I'm gonna go to the beginning of that. I'm gonna beat this up. That's a plus.
Surprise that. No, it's not in here.
How was it? Hmm. Did you have a good day? Didn't do a thing?
Well, this morning was kind of a disappointment to look outside. I was just telling Sandy, I wanna put my shovel away and I can't.
That's why I haven't done this. This hard work, it's beautiful. Then it was, then I thought myself, I said, okay, it'll be gone by three o'clock, I said, this is great.
It really did.
You know, April. I have seen some hellacious snowstorms in April. Sure you're gonna.
The best part is the lake is free.
Yeah, yeah.
Totally free and I love it.
Yeah. I was gonna say, it's pretty perfect.
They probably agree.
Didn't warm up. Well, the bass line is, yeah, the way she is, it's a secret spot, that lake. Wow, they have some big bass. I know, but I'm not telling you. Hey. I, 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 once in a while, fill the line as a forecast. You know, I used to be an avid deep sea victim. I used to go, I mean, it was incredible. My favorite food was salt fish steak. It just fed me better than the tenderloin, okay? When I started finding out about the mercury levels and then, and then when I went down the St. John River. Do not eat any of the fish in most of the lakes, the rivers, even in my fishing book. I said, I don't want to catch some of these. And I get it too. Now, I love that idea of surviving. Like, I never forget when I was 15, I stayed at my mother's camp by myself. I'm like, oh God, I had no food in the morning. And so I just, I woke up, I had some, I had some, some crackers. I went out, I caught a 11, 3, 4, Rich Ray Dog trout. I ran with that trout, it had butter, I said, this is great.
Did you have a black iron pan to cook it in?
I don't remember now.
I bet you did. I bet you did and that is, but I.
And, right, I don't wanna do this, great. It's quite, oh, and then in the back is one of the blueberries. So I had, I must have had blueberries.
Very healthy breakfast.
I was only 15, I had no. That was when I wanted to be near in the room. I should have known that, my mother's son, get rid of me.
Yeah.
It comes, you ever come away with that, must be day, Monday, Friday.
This is good. This is good. Because I don't either know about these 2,000 wins.
Wow.
And I didn't know what Kelvin, Kelvin light was, but that's good, so they covered that.
Andy had asked me for seven, that's. We don't have four, Andy and I are all, neither is I.
Oh, yeah, I know what my.
They gave me back, I just printed it out of the way I was. Uh, I mean, Kenny was all over the mall. I was ready to go there. I don't, as for family, pretty nice, too. Since he was in the hospital. Andy was in, I wish I could very soon. Pam's family, so Dave was, was, so I didn't call him, oh, okay, yes, there you go. Somebody got your old, your old man.
Oh.
Oh.
Fortune on TV on channel 11.
Oh, her, well, I should be.
Oh. Yeah. And Lewis Gates.
You know, for some.
Finally.
How you doing? Oh, I don't know. What's the matter? Oh, listen, I got a lot of, uh.
Was, just one of the last.
Uh, stuff for.
Because they.
Putting it together.
His family.
Some assembly required.
Okay.
They left out, they sent the longer.
This woman trying to be wise.
Oh, gee. But I'm trying to figure it out.
DNA.
I've got five. Ten minutes left. I know the picture, right on, here's three. Two wheels. So, about a D. They want to test, okay, here's a big one, so, listen. Oh, Mr. Guy. And they have the right, oh, you're right, oh, you're right, I can lose it. Oh, God, I don't know, well, nothing, oh, we manage, so, out of that, we never have to explain. Oh, my dad, John, you, oh, really? I hope to, let me get everybody, cause somebody get over there, yeah, that's all. I don't know. What's your boy, Janice and I, yeah, good, yeah, Janice and my cats. Yes. And, very, very small trial, okay. And so, I hate that, some ostensibly required.
Your first stuff.
When you buy stuff, when I, when I get a new roof. Yeah, yeah. I had a fall, you know, that. There's a guy, or that, or people, people, so, hey, right. So, I mean, you know, that one, I remember, right, actually. I've already read all these books, but you look, I don't know, the person, you look always ask, oh, man, he's after something. Oh, he don't like people that have. Oh, good. Here. Oh, man, he's a number, he's a little bit, hey, look at Dave, you guys, okay, it's been right, he knows, but a cat with a gun, a lot, you know, a smoking. You. Not gonna spell again, Colonel Laurel, next week, maybe next week, yeah. Who knows, on the other side of all, no doubt. Well.
That sounds good to me.
But I prefer it to somebody. Sorry. And the pressure was 40 miles away, this third was surprising. I mean, it killed most of them. It's a board member. And whatever. This, this is it, Janice. Actually, I'm good under there, did you say? I guess he said to me, so, he said she's gonna drop there straight. And I'm like, we'll make a bill on the other. Get Dick is missing and, and, uh, later, later, I'm gonna let the act. Six out of town, and then Shapiro, I think, I'm not sure, he's still in the hospital or still. He's, he's, formerly, he's, uh, 17, 34 out of 13. He is one of the 17, so, he was like, I gotta change that, oh. That'd be bad.
Good evening.
That's me, mother-in-law. What, my mother-in-law? Uh, sorry, Andy, he's not getting through it. He, he made the comment, he and I are both, Andy was saying that some fellow named Dave was worth. Oh, the big one? Yeah. Yeah, right, that, if you, yeah. Today, yeah. Put it down. Oh, I thought you, I thought you said you're still on the phone. No. All right. No, we sold. Very good at what I knew, what I knew. That's been 10 years. Exactly, how many of them, that, Thomas did. You're gonna ask more, what I'm saying, exactly, he wants. My great-grandfather was a visiting painter for 50 years. When the local historian was asked why he never wrote about my great-grandfather, another response, I had Catherine, who said he was. I, you know, Catherine, that's something women are worried about, some, you can say. Yeah. Do you know where the Black Saloon is? Main Street, Union Block, Thomas.
Oh, yeah.
Guy called me about six years ago, he said, I wanna know if I have any relation to this, that one, or the home, the, the saloon, and, and, and that's my great-grandfather. You shouldn't have said that. That, that is. Andy. Fine, Andy. Goodbye. Yeah, yeah. That's your grandfather. Tomorrow. I'm just telling Dave, they're coming tomorrow. Hello. That mean you and I are brothers? What's that? We're cousins and mom. Oh. We're not, you know, we got the bad. Good. Okay, this is, this.
Okay, this is, this is it. Oh, I just know that, yeah. Definitely.
What do we do? Where do I sign? I'll let them know how it is.
It's six o'clock. Take care of it. Yeah, waiting for a man. I was, I resigned there.
Starting this. So what are you running for?
Twenty years sugar.
I think I better be nice to you. All the way up to Denver, a western. Yeah. It was a very. What's that? Congrats on.
Of course I am. I wouldn't be here in this. Oh, yeah, but she, she can't. She's just a secretary. But she's, she's our Nancy, yes. You're welcome. Good luck.
How many segments do you need? They have to be anyone. Yeah. Thank God. I'm gonna be thankful for not being in the Navy. My mother's. Blood that probably just chugging for joy.
Oh, Josh, no problem. They're lying. You're out. It's just all through this corner. Just bang, 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 bang. It's almost so. Oh, good.
Oh, I didn't get to change my clothes for.
Well, I like to be there. Hey, man. I don't, all right, now if you don't stand up, get in front of the field. You don't know what it's like. She's my work life.
Oh, my gosh.
There's a little guy at the front. You need to move to your lap desk. Little bit of all of this. There we go. Now we're good in the world. All right, one of those gonna be great.
Thanks, David.
You're welcome. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I know, I have. Edition.
We're doing this just for you. We're doing this just for you, Tyler.
I'm messed up, Brian. Since old, then I get emotional. And now everything's in my head. Now I'm all over it. This was like three weeks ago. But I got into my sinus tubes. Now I can't hear anything. I gotta put on the, uh. Subtitles.
Does your wife believe you? Does your wife believe you?
Uh, because I had a long, long way. I don't know. I need subtitles.
I'll have to remember that string.
Six o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order, please. This is the Wednesday, whoop. That's the wrong one. This is the Wednesday, April ninth, meeting of the planning board for the town of Lincolnville. Before we get started, I'll just like everybody to introduce themselves up here, please. Start with you.
Janice Cave, Lincolnville Center.
Earl Brown. Dick Butler, Chair.
Mike Terry, Ocoa, listen. Sandy Holloway, Chair.
Nancy Weeser, Searsman.
Okay. Um, the, we have one on agenda item this evening. It's a shoreline zone agenda item. It's B R Development LLC. Has submitted an application to rebuild a camp at forty sixth Avenue, forty sixth Avenue, map eight lot twenty-two. Andy Young will be presenting. So. If we're ready to go, Mr. Young.
You want me to do it or Brian do it?
Doesn't matter. Whoever wants, whoever wants to do it.
You can't.
Well, thank you for coming in to see me tonight. Um, I'm here to apply for an application to, uh, rebuild a, a new camp at. An existing camp and rebuild it on forty-sixth Avenue. Forty-sixth Avenue in Lincolnville. And. In the packet you say, I'm not going any closer to the pond. Um, I'm just adding. Uh, less of the thirty percent that's allowed in the back left, left corner. Of the building. And we're going up a maximum to the twenty feet that is allowed from the horizontal mean from the front of the camp. So basically, I'm not, I'm not going any closer to the water. And I'm just adding in the back left-hand corner. And redoing the camp because the camp has, uh, was totally rotted out. Once we started getting into it, uh. So does anybody have any questions for me?
I, I had a couple, but I think it just. I wasn't sure where the additions seem to be. You've got a section on the back which is just filling in.
Yeah, a section, uh, in the section on the back left-hand corner.
No, I went through it.
So. The question, the only, I, I had a question, but I think you. Uh, I talked to Frank and it's been answered, I believe, in that, uh, you're not going any closer to the pond. But you're not going. Back any further than what was there before. Now, you, you know, if you had the room, you would have to go back. Apparently, there's a reason that you're not going back.
Correct. The reason, uh, we're not going back farther from the pond is the septic, the existing septic system is already in place there. And the septic system can't be moved as well. Because of the nature of the lot itself, it kind of goes into a triangle. Towards the pond and goes through a triangle back up to the access road. The septic system is basically right by the access road and then the camp is right after the septic system. So we've gone. Yeah, we couldn't, even if we wanted to go back, even thirty percent, we couldn't because the septic is there.
No, Andy and I, Andy Young and I have gone through this quite thoroughly. And, uh. Uh, all the shoreline zoning requirements have been met, uh, this. And as, uh. Brian has stated, uh, it's on the septic. Septic design is actually his answer as to why I can't move back. Because it, it says in there the septic system needs to be at least eight feet. The building, which is. Which is normal because the closer the building, uh, the more septic system is gonna be easier to get. So that was the biggest thing there. And, uh, the only thing you didn't show on here was the mathematics showing that your twenty percent really didn't change. Uh, with that little bit that you added on. Okay. As Andy pointed out. Even with adding of the. The new stairs, even though they were closer to the pond, they still met the same setback of thirty-five feet as a closer building.
Yes.
There, there should be calculations.
There are.
Okay. I didn't say, as I just looked at, but anyway. All the killer zoning issues, according to section twelve, were non-conforming buildings. Are satisfied with what has been submitted.
So you have to take the tree down?
Yes, because it's. Two's gotta come down. Yeah.
So, no other questions? Anybody? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the application as admitted.
I'll second that. Okay, uh. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Now, now, did you want us to drag this out because they had to drive way up here for this?
No, it's okay. I'm not gonna stay up here tonight.
We're trying to accommodate you.
Well, thank you very much, people. I appreciate it.
We don't have enough of them in Lincolnville.
Am I not? I'm not the only one?
Oh, heck, we got all kinds of ridges here.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Who's got a rigid stream?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I haven't run into another ridges before yet. Well, I've been out here for twenty years. It was nuts.
It's related to ridges.
Ridges finally linked to Canada. And then married after, linked to.
Okay. Yeah.
So tomorrow morning, did you got building permit or? I don't think I'm gonna see you tomorrow. And anyways, you're covered. Well, I go over here by pre-application, but I'll probably be there now way ahead of schedule.
You know, accommodate.
No. So we also have, uh, some minutes from the March twenty-sixth meeting.
I'll interject something here. Uh, the one copy that was sent to you came in early and looking me over again, I realize on the minutes. I didn't complete who seconded.